Welcome everyone to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call the meeting to order, approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections? Matt, do you have anything?
Hey, I'm Mayor Council. I've got one addition I'd like for you to consider. We can put it at the end of the agenda, item eleven point five, if you want to number it. But it's regarding a resolution calling a public hearing. This has to do with financing regarding the proposed new police station.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I will second that.
There he approved the agenda with the addition. Motion made by Mary, second by Chad. Roll call. Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Invitation is by Pastor Tim from Riverside Church. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you guys and pray for you guys. Dear the Father, we come before you right now. We just thank you for the city of Hutchinson and the community around us. Father, we ask that you just be with these, with the mayor and the council members, Father God, today as they make decisions for our city and our community. Father, we pray for our police station and our chief of police, Father God, we pray that you just continue to guide their hearts and their minds, Father, and for our fire department as well, and all the other departments within the city of Hutchinson. Father, we ask right now that you just guide their steps every moment of the day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next is pledge of allegiance. Dave, you want to do the honors?
It's my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next is recognitions of gifts, donations, community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. Resolution number one, five, two, nine, four, accepting donations, a donation of five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars from Liz Sterns towards playground equipment replacement at J.C. Women's Park. And I think Lynn's here to discuss it. Lynn, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have two of the community members that helped with the fundraising donations here this evening. And I'll just introduce them and let them take the floor, and they can give an overview of their efforts and the project that they put in place. And this is for the J.C. Women's Park located at ten fifty Global Street Southwest. So Liz Sterns and Callie Schwartz are here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Callie Schwartz. I grew up across the street from J.C. Women's Park, and I currently live right around the corner on Graham Street now.
Hi, my name is Liz Sterns. I also live on Graham Street near J.C. Women's Playground. And for this fundraiser, our goal was to raise five thousand dollars. And we wanted to show that the neighborhood wants an updated playground. It's twenty-five years old, and we received, or it's already received a generation of play. Innovations of playground equipment now emphasize multipurpose play and stimulates motor cognitive and social development. Our main reason for this fundraiser was to reward kids for the sacrifices that they made in this pandemic. Life has changed as they know it, and they don't even really understand it. So we launched this fundraiser October twenty-third of two thousand twenty, and we reached our goal by the thirty-first of December two thousand twenty. We had three strategies to solicit donations. We did social media for individual donations. We made phone calls to local businesses and organizations. And then lastly, we did a toy sale in December. We collected donated toys and then reposted them on Facebook Marketplace and asked people to play what they can. And that money went towards the fundraiser. The total we raised was six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. We had over seventy families donate three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Businesses and organizations donated two thousand eight hundred dollars, and our toy sale collected three hundred and eighty dollars. The city's already received a thousand dollar check from Citizens Bank and a hundred dollar check from Westland Associates. And I have a check today for five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
I think the ladies need a round of applause for all the hard work. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to accept that donation.
And make a motion to accept that donation.
I'll second that. Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to accept the donation. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public comment, citizens addressing the council. Matt, I know we have some young ladies there that want to check the council.
Yes, we do. And you guys can come right up to this podium right here.
Whoops.
You're okay.
That's all right.
Hi, my name is Annabelle. We are all in fifth grade, which means we are junior Girl Scouts. We are all from Hutchinson. We are here to present our, the city, our bronze award that we have been working on all through the school year. The bronze award is the highest reward that you can get as a junior. We have been working very hard to prepare and accomplish our project. Lily is going to start off by telling you what we decided to do.
Hi, my name is Lily, and my troop and I are doing our bronze reward. And we are making a part of the Girl Scout Park into a butterfly place where they can live and enjoy.
My name is Jackie, and for the butterfly garden's plants, we decided to grow that ourselves and also buy some with money we earned from selling cookies. We also took home some milkweed plants to grow, since it will be our main plant, because monarch butterflies depend on it to lay their eggs. Our troop also decided to raise the butterflies from caterpillars. It's one about the transformation from caterpillar to butterfly. Butterfly garden will also be pesticide-free.
Thank you, City Council, for your support of the Girl Scouts and our bronze reward project.
We hope you enjoy Girl Scout Park and our butterfly sanctuary. Make sure to stop by during the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I know I enjoy butterflies. I think Mary's got a big smile. I think Mary likes to watch them too, so.
So, Mayor, you have a couple pictures that I'll show that the Girl Scouts did pass on to us just to kind of give you an idea of what the plantings are going to look like and where they're going to go, so.
That would be wonderful, Matt. Thanks.
Pull this up. I believe these are the various different types of plants and flowers that are going to be getting planted within Girl Scout Park. And I'll pull up the second picture they sent me. This is like the location on exactly where that's going to be within the Girl Scout Park. So both the council and the public has an idea of what's going in there.
And Matt, Girl Scout Park is right alongside the Rock theme, correct?
Yep, it's right downtown, across from, I think, the, what is it, the Gateway Park, our recent new park in the downtown area and across the street from Fireman's Park. So kitty corner to Wells Fargo Bank.
All righty. Again, thank you, ladies, for all the work that you put into the butterfly garden.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, ladies. It's awesome.
All righty, we have regular meeting minutes of March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the minutes. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A, we have consideration approval of resolution number one, five, two, nine, three, resolution authorizing a donation of surplus property sound equipment to HCVN. And B is resolution number one, five, two, nine, five, amending resolution number one, five, one, five, eight, establishing income guidelines and assist limitation for senior citizens sixty-five years or older, disabled citizens, active duty military, reserve, or National Guard deferred assessment, and senior citizen reduce refuge rate. C is approval of revision to the city policy three point three four tell play policy. D is approval of the two thousand twenty-one job evaluation and compensation study market list. E is approval of the J.C. Woman's Park lease agreement. F is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Rotary Foundation on June tenth, two thousand twenty-one at Rotary Park. G is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Saturday Night Cruiser Car Club. H is approval of Hutchinson J.C. Water Carnival request. I is approval of issuing parade permit for Memorial Day Parade on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And J is claims appropriation contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Brandon to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We do not have a public hearing, communications requests and petitions. We have the Economic Development Authority year-end report. I take a miles as close being around eight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for taking the time. I've got a short report on the activities of the Hutchinson EDA. Matt is going to pull up the presentation. I was originally going to do this from the Enterprise Center, but then I ran into a snag with my technology. So I had to dash down here for this. Okay. Basically, what I'm going to talk about, I'll just cover real briefly a little bit about the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority itself, and then our different activities in the downtown and the industrial park, and then other programs that were running. And then at the end, I'll be happy to answer questions that anybody might have. So, next slide. Just a quick overview of the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority. We exist, our purpose is to facilitate redevelopment, job creation, and the success of manufacturing in our community. Our vision, next slide, is to have a vibrant, attractive downtown and be a thriving center for precision high-tech manufacturing, and then also be recognized as Minnesota's leader in innovative project-oriented economic development. Next slide. And then our key values for the organization for the EDA is a commitment to excellence, collaboration, partnership, and teamwork to achieve our goals, integrity, honesty, and good communication in our relationships, innovation and creativity in the way that we do our work, and most importantly, achieving results for our community. Next. The EDA, it's governed by a seven-member board of directors. It's mostly local business leaders, and then we have two members of the city council that sit on the EDA board. And then Jeremy Carter is from Hutchinson Utilities as an ex officio, non-voting member of the board as well. Next slide. And then the EDA board, they're assisted by a finance team. So we have a nine-member finance team. Again, a group of business leaders from the community, and that's chaired by Mike Cannon from Citizens Bank. And then two members of the finance team are also on the EDA board to make sure there's good communication between the two groups. Next slide. Okay, activity report for two thousand twenty. A busy year and a good year. We'll start off with our downtown projects. Downtown has always been a real area of focus for the EDA, and to help facilitate or to maintain our downtown businesses. Next slide. We have three programs that really help businesses in the downtown area. So we have a sign and awning grant program that provides up to two thousand dollars for businesses to put up a sign or a new awning, whatever they need. So for two thousand twenty, we made six grant awards totaling a little bit more than five thousand dollars. A second program that we have is the facade improvement matching grant. And this is a matching grant program. So the building owner, every dollar that they put in, we will match it with another dollar up to seven thousand five hundred. So for two thousand twenty, we awarded four of these grants totaling a little bit more than seventeen thousand dollars. And then finally, we have a commercial rehabilitation loan program. This is to help provide financing for larger building improvements. So in two thousand twenty, we made one loan to Main Street Sports Bar, next slide, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so Main Street Sports Bar is doing an expansion, and we really viewed them as one of the pillars of the downtown. And so that's why the EDA wanted to be a part of this project and do everything we could to help make it a successful project. Next slide. Other, a real focus of activity for the EDA is downtown redevelopment. And a lot of this is centered around getting rid of light and improving, just improving the area, and particularly buildings. So one of our key project areas for these last few years is the Franklin Street redevelopment area up on the south edge of the Crow River and just a block off of Main Street. You can go one more, Matt, and that'll, there you go. This kind of began back in two thousand sixteen when we acquired a one-acre lot and had an old office building on it. So we purchased all that and took that building out, and really it was just to set the stage for this area to be redeveloped. Next. Second step that we did, and this is just very recent now, is that we acquired what's known as the Franklin House. And so by the end of this year, we're going to remove that building from that property and get that lot positioned for redevelopment. And next. And then also, we, this would be last year that we applied for a grant from FEMA, and we're going to find out in September, I think, of this year, whether or not we are going to get the grant. But we applied for a little bit more than half a million dollars, and if successful, then our goal is to acquire the three properties outlined in the red box that you see and remove them. And then I think potentially after that, we would just get the rest of the block cleared off, and that would create a two-acre area for redevelopment. So, next slide. We're in the process of talking with a developer now, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to reach an agreement with the developer here in the next couple months. But what's being discussed is a townhome redevelopment for this block. And as you can see on your screen, this would encompass all the areas that we talked about. So, next slide. This is kind of what they would look like. So it's not a done deal yet, but we're working on it. And like I said, I hope in the next, next few months here that we'll have something in, something really lined up. So we'll see. Next slide. Another redevelopment that we've been working on for years, and this one's been maturing slowly, because this began way back in two thousand seven. And this was a partnership between the city and the Economic Development Authority, and then working with Hutchinson Co-op. We acquired the site where they used to have their fertilizer plant over on the north side of the Crow River, right off of Third Avenue. So this was an area that was quite blighted, and it was several properties that we wound up acquiring and then removing a bunch of buildings, working with the state of Minnesota to do a pretty significant cleanup of the environment in that area, because there was some significant contamination. And then also combining all the various lots to create one bigger lot, and really just set the stage for redevelopment. Next slide. This is what it used to look like years ago. This is an aerial view of the fertilizer plant, and on the south side of that, you know, it was railroad right of way, and then there was a very tiny house in the trees on the right side of that picture. So that's all been cleaned up, and we are talking with a developer, and I'm not quite sure of the timing, but our goal is to get this redeveloped in some fashion. So we'll have to wait and see how that goes. Next slide. Out in the industrial park, pretty busy year. Next slide. First Warrior Manufacturing, they finished up their expansion. This began in two thousand nineteen, and the EDA was, played a pretty big role in helping bring this about. But Warrior Manufacturing completed their forty thousand square foot expansion in the spring of two thousand twenty. It was a project that was a little bit more than three million dollars. And over the next couple years, it'll create at least five new jobs, I think quite a bit more than that actually, because it really sets the stage for Warrior Manufacturing to continue to grow in our community. So that was a big win for us. Next slide. Another project that came about last year was Right Way Conveyors. Initially, we had been talking with a builder about doing an industrial spec building in the industrial park. And we just thought, well, let's see if we can build a thirty thousand square foot building, and then we'll use that to try to attract a new manufacturer. So we're talking with Systems West Builders of Litchfield early in last year. And then at the same time, we were having conversations with a company called Right Way Conveyors that really needed to get into a new location. And so we were actually to bring those, we were actually able to bring those two projects together. And the result then was Right Way Conveyors coming into our industrial park. So they built a new forty thousand five hundred square foot building, and that was completed right at the beginning, right at the end of two thousand twenty, and then the company moved in beginning of January. And so right now, I think they have thirty-five employees. I know they're extraordinarily busy manufacturing conveyor systems and material handling systems, and the company's hiring. They cannot get people in there fast enough to work. So a good success story for us. Next slide. This is not one that we were directly involved in, but it was a project that happened in two thousand twenty, Resonetics, a company called Resonetics. They are, they do a lot of medical device manufacturing, and they had been in talks with TDK HTI. And ultimately, they purchased their medical devices division. And then along with that, they leased a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of HTI's building on a long-term basis, and then a hundred and fifty HTI employees transferred over and then became Resonetics employees. So we're very excited to have them here in Hutchinson, and we're excited about the possibilities that the future might bring. So another good win, I think, for Hutchinson. Next slide. And then on the administrative side, pretty busy as well. Next. Biggest thing, I think, was just developing and administering the CARES program. As you recall, you know, the city received monies from the CARES Act at the federal level, and then ultimately, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated by the city council to the EDA in order to put together a business assistance program. So of that, we were able to use a little bit more than ninety-three percent, seven hundred and one thousand. We put together a business assistance program, and ultimately, there were eighty-one applications, of which sixty-nine were deemed to qualify. So we funded sixty-nine, and then it was set up as a forgivable loan program. And then the business or the organization would meet certain requirements, and then have their loan forgiven. So the average of those forgivable loans was almost eleven thousand, ten thousand eight seventy-eight. And then on the right of your screen there, there's a table that kind of gave a breakdown of who, or, yeah, who got funded. So ten local nonprofits were able to get funding, which was critical to their survival. We were able to provide funding for twenty-seven downtown businesses, four small manufacturers, and then twenty-eight other businesses in the community. So I think a very successful program, and we're just wrapping that up right now. I think out of all the applicants, we have only one left that we need to forgive that loan, and then we would wrap this up. So, next slide. Other things that we did in two thousand twenty is we did a pretty significant update of our EDA website. And so we just modernized it, made it so that it works better on different devices, like your smartphone or your tablet, and then added information that was really relevant to corporate site selectors and commercial real estate people. Next slide. There you go. We also updated our strategic plan in two thousand twenty. So this is kind of our roadmap for economic development in Hutchinson. And so just real briefly, I mean, our core strategy is to take care of our existing companies and really prioritize those guys first. Over eighty percent of the new jobs in the community, they come from our existing companies. So we really want to put them first and foremost, and do everything that we can to help them grow and be successful. Other areas that we really focus on are skilled workforce development, business incubation with us, with the Hutchinson Enterprise Center, trying to be as ready as possible so that we can attract business expansion projects, and then finally promoting downtown redevelopment, because we want to keep our downtown attractive and vibrant and a real center of activity in our community. Next slide. Other activities for two thousand twenty, we kind of worked behind the scenes and did everything that we could to promote economic development at the county level. And this has been a project that the EDA's been working on for many years. I mean, way back in two thousand eight, we made a big push for county-level economic development. And at the time, we were not successful, but we did plant some seeds, and we did get some people thinking about the possibilities. So fast forward to two thousand twenty, and the county decided to hire a consulting firm called Eighty Advantage. It was a group that we recommended to them, and they said, okay, we'll go with them. And then Eighty Advantage's been helping the county develop a strategic plan for economic development. That's been going on for the last six months or so, and should be wrapped up, I think, in the next two months. And then this will culminate, I think, very possibly in the hiring of economic development staff at the county sometime this summer. So this is going to be a big victory for Hutchinson and for all of McLeod Counties. We're extremely excited about this. Next slide. And then also just marketing Hutchinson for economic development. And to do that, really, it's, it just revolves around taking care of our existing customers first, take care of our existing businesses to help them be successful, leverage our economic development website, build our relationship with the Department of Employment and Economic Development at the state level, build our brand identity as Minnesota's manufacturing city. Build our brand identity as Minnesota's manufacturing city. Um, be more intentional about cultivating relationships with corporate site selectors. And then finally leveraging our membership in the Minnesota Marketing Partnership so that we can get our name uh, in front of corporate site selectors and commercial real estate folks. And hopefully, uh, bring some projects our way. Next slide. For twenty twenty-one, um, goals, um, really this fall, I'm going to get going and, uh, visit our, all of our local manufacturers. Um, I'd like to do that every, every two years or so, I always make the rounds and uh, visit them in person to see what they're doing and how we can be helpful. Another key area of emphasis is just going to continue to be downtown redevelopment with different projects. Uh, we're going to continue our efforts to hopefully, uh, lure a new company to our industrial park. Um, we're in the process right now of cultivating a relationship with the MBA program at St. Cloud State University. Um, because that gives us an opportunity to hopefully leverage those resources on behalf of our local manufacturers. Uh, we're going to continue our support of Tiger Path over at Hutchinson High School. Uh, we're always prospecting for grant dollars. And then finally, we'll be supporting in every way that we can uh, economic development at the county level. Next slide. And then one current project that we're working on right now is the Jump Start Downtown Business Plan Contest. Um, quite a few store openings or, or vacant buildings up and down Main Street. So the EDA wanted to do something about that. And so that's where this came from. So we had, um, thirteen entries that were submitted here as of this past Friday. That was the deadline for submitting proposals. So we'll have a review committee look at those this week and make decisions. Um, those will be announced on Friday and then the ones that get announced on Friday, we're going to be inviting to submit a full-fledged business plan. So the process will culminate on June seventh. That's when we would pick a winner. And then the goal is to have a new business open on Main Street, um, by early October. And we're just real happy and I just want to, uh, kind of do a little shout out to our co-sponsors because they really help us make this project happen. Vivid Image, uh, the Hutchinson Leader, KDUZ and Crow River Science all contributed to the, the, the prize package that we put together. And then we have partnerships too with the Small Business Development Center. Southwest Initiative Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Association, Ridgewater College. And then of course the EDA itself. So I mean, it's really all these entities that are coming together to help do jumpstart downtown. So we're excited and hopeful and we'll see what comes out of it. Next slide. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say thank you to the city council. I mean, the city council is the key to our success. Without your support, we couldn't be doing anywhere near what we're doing. So, uh, we just want to say thank you for that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And that's the report.
Anybody have any questions for? Miles?
Well, thank you very much, Miles. So it sounds like you guys are really busy. Keep up the good work. Thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you very much.
Alrighty, we do not have any unfinished business. We'll jump into new business. Uh, we have land lease agreement with the Hutchinson Utilities Commission to construct and operate a solar powered generating facility.
Uh, Mayor Council, I hand it over to actually, uh, City Attorney Mark Sabora, who's been kind of working as a liaison between, uh, the two of us.
Uh, yes, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Um, before you tonight is a proposed lease between Hutchinson Utilities and the City of Hutchinson. As you mentioned, to, uh, construct a solar energy array in the industrial park. Uh, as you're very well aware, both the city and the utilities have a pretty long history of commitment to the environment and green energy. As you might recall back in, I think it was two thousand fifteen. The city constructed a four hundred, uh, megawatt system to supply the energy needs for the city's wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, the city of Hutchinson for a number of years has been designated as a green step city in the state of Minnesota. I think, uh, Matt, you may have to help me out on this, but I think we're the highest level you can be at a level five right now.
Correct.
Um, and we've been at that level for about five years or so. I think we've been in the program like seven years total, but uh, to receive that designation, you have to have a commitment to the environment, uh, including having energy efficient buildings, sustainable purchasing practices, having efficiencies in your water and wastewater system. Um, and a comprehensive park and trail system to promote healthy lifestyles. And also I recall, uh, Hutchinson, the city of Hutchinson being a tree city USA. I think we're the second oldest in the state. Steve Cook could correct me on that. Um, but I think it's approaching forty years or so. Uh, again, showing a commitment to the environment. Hutchinson Utilities as well as, uh, been increasing its commitment to green energy over the years to the point where in twenty twenty, uh, I believe seventy-one percent of the energy, uh, provided to the ratepayers of the city of Hutchinson came from carbon-free sources. And, uh, if you've been following along with the utilities meetings on television, uh, you will know that, uh, the commission has committed to purchasing renewable energy credits to become a one hundred percent net zero carbon utility in the year twenty twenty-one. And that's a pretty unique designation. Uh, I guess by way of reference, Hutchinson Utilities is a member of Missouri River Energy Services and there are sixty-three utilities that are in that group. Uh, Hutchinson Utilities would be only the third utility that would be a net zero carbon utility. So it's pretty special. I guess more specifically to the item that's before you tonight. Uh, I don't know if you can get, put the map on the screen, Matt, but, um, this lease that's, uh, before you for consideration involves some property that's located in the Hus- in the Hutchinson Industrial Park, uh, near the corner of Industrial Boulevard and Hapbar Street. And, uh, man, maybe you could move your cursor kind of in the area where the uh, solar, solar array would be conducted. I know it's included in your packet, but that copy didn't turn out so well. So as you can see, that corner lot is the primarily, primary area where the facility would be constructed and going through the middle of that lot is a natural gas pipeline, which really limits the development of that corner lot. Uh, basically I would say to the point where that lot is not saleable. Uh, in a nutshell, um, the lease would require the utility to pay the city of Hutchinson forty thousand dollars a year for the use of the property of that forty thousand dollars. Four thousand would be dedicated to the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority to help them offset the electrical costs that they incur at their incubator building in the industrial park. So, um, the lease is proposed to be for twenty years with the option to extend that period, two additional five-year periods. So all told, at the end of the lease, the city of Hutchinson would be getting between eight hundred thousand and one point two million dollars in rental income for that lot. Which is pretty significant, um, even if the lot was able to be sold. A typical lot in the industrial park of that size generates about eight thousand dollars per year in city income taxes and, um, getting a rental income of forty thousand dollars obviously far outweighs that. So really it's a win-win for everyone. Um, it's proposed that they're going to be constructing a, uh, one point one million kilowatt system on the property. And then again, by way of reference, that amount of power would power one hundred and five homes in the city of Hutchinson for a year. At the last utilities meeting, uh, the Utilities Commission approved the lease. And I'd be asking you to do the same on behalf of the city of Hutchinson. So if you have any questions about the lease, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise I'd ask for your approval.
Is there any questions for Mark on the subject?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I will second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, moving on, reviewing, renewing the reviewing the waste manage. I can read, I can even talk tonight. So, uh, waste hauling contract with West Central Sanitation.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, obviously this is in front of, uh, in front of you tonight for your consideration. Um, back in two thousand fifteen, the city, um, I guess did an RFP, um, looking for a, a new, a new waste hauler. And later that year, um, they did end up, uh, after receiving a couple of proposals, we did end up going into a, in agreement with, uh, West Central Sanitation to um, provide waste hauling services for the city. It was actually, I think it was in October of two thousand and five. Um, our initial contract was for five years. Um, and that contract technically expired in October of, uh, twenty twenty. Um, since that time, I've been in conversation, um, with, uh, management at West Central to, looking to um, renew that lease and expand upon that lease that, uh, for the services they provided the city over the last five years. Um, we've got a very good relationship with, um, West Central. And I guess I'll just, uh, highlight, I guess, some of the, of the, the points for, um, for your consideration tonight as you look at entering into or renewing a contract with West Central. And I would point out that they technically worked for us over the last six months without a contract. So I very much appreciate um, that. Like I said, I didn't have any concerns that we weren't going to enter into one, but, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So let's be, what's in front of you tonight for consideration is a contract that would be effective, uh, May first of twenty twenty-one. It's a contract for, for seven years. Um, I will note that there's no rate increase, um, within that contract outside of our semi-annual, uh, CPI rate adjustments that have been a part of that contract, um, since two thousand and fifteen. We did make some minor adjustments to, to the spring fall cleanup, um, in which West Central is not going to be able to use our landfill to take care of some of that, um, that waste that, that we've been collecting. We've actually seen our costs double since the the contract went into effect for our annual spring cleanup. Um, and so that was part of the um, part of our thought process and, and looking at changing some of that, some of that language. Um, it will note, and I did highlight this within the contract that actually our most recent adjustment for the CPI, um, was up here in April and we just got those numbers today. And so I'll be looking to implement that new rate, which is ten dollars and sixty-three cents into that um, contract, assuming that we have no issues with West Central in our, in our calculations. So um, I've included the contract in your packet. We've noted the changes to it. Um, I will say that we do have both Don Williamson and Jeff Bertram are in attendance virtually tonight. If anybody had any questions, uh, for West Central, if not, I would ask for you guys to consider um, approving the, the contract.
And make a motion to approve the contract. Um, I think they do a really nice job.
And I agree, they do a good job.
Alrighty, motion by Chad, second by Mary to renew the contract with West Central Sanitation. Uh, roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
Don, do you want to say anything to the council?
Uh, just to be brief, and I want to say thank you very much to the mayor and the city council and to you, Matt, and your staff. We really do appreciate our relationship working for you. And always feel free to contact Jeff or myself if any of you have any questions or concerns. And, uh, Saturday, we're going to be there bright and early to get the city cleaned up for the spring cleanup. So have everyone ready for that. Thank you.
Uh, don't worry, Don. I think people have been, um, preparing for it for the last two or three weeks already. So.
Oh, good. All right. Well, I plan to be there too. So we'll say hi.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, moving on, uh, moving city council meetings from virtual setting back to in-person meetings.
Um, Mayor and Council, I know this was discussed at the, the last council meeting, um, with a desire to, to bring someone, something forward for your consideration or or for action. And as I noted within the, the board action form, it was actually about a year ago. Um, I think today that, um, the council moved, or back on April fourteenth of twenty twenty, the council made the motion to go into a virtual setting. This was obviously towards the, the start of the, the current pandemic that we've been working through. And so we've been meeting virtually since April of twenty twenty. Um, there's been, I think, discussions a couple of times about whether or not, um, to bring the council back to, to meeting in person. Um, and I said, based off of the conversation that was at the last council meeting, we brought it forward tonight for your consideration. Just a couple of things to, to point out to the council. Um, if, if this is a desire of the council to, to move forward with meeting in person, I know we talked about trying to start that on May eleventh. And so that's what's within the, the current action. And I would ask that any action that is taken, if you do decide to come back and meet in person, that you specifically state that, that date. And I know there was a desire to continue to allow those who um, would like to meet virtually to do so. And as we noted, our council chambers have been updated within the last year to to allow that flexibility at a, at a greater level. Um, Mary, sorry, you? You trying to say something? Oh. Um, and so that, that, that is an option. Um, with the current requirements, there's still, um, mask requirements, uh, with meeting in the council chambers. Obviously those can be taken off when communicating to the, to the council. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. I know we are also looking at potentially putting up some dividers amongst the, between the different, uh, chairs within the, the council chambers, but, um, I would gladly, uh, I guess, answer any questions you may have. Otherwise it's up for your consideration. So, sorry, Mary? Are you trying to say something, Mary?
Oh, technology, so.
Hi, Matt. This is Dave. Uh, if you put up the, uh, dividers, are you talking front and down the sides?
I'm just down the sides at this point.
Just down the side at this point? I think my, my feeling is if we go back to chambers, if it's voted that way, I'd just soon be maskless to that. So I'm wondering if there would be, uh, something that could be done in the front to, uh, allow that.
Um, I'm not sure if we I'd have to look at that, I guess. So.
Same.
Basically talking about building the chambers. In the chambers.
Say, say Matt, has the governor give any indication when he's going to announce the next phase or not? Or does that, have you heard anything on that, on that front or not?
Um, no, I, I believe his current, um, executive order is set to expire within the next day or two. Um, but there's been no indications on when, uh, on what's changing or what's not changing. So.
Well, personally, I, I would, uh, just actually just stay meeting the way we are until we can go back into chambers and not wear a mask. That'd be my feeling.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything to gain by being in person. I think Tom and his team have done a great job, um, facilitating the online meeting and especially with like the case rate in McLeod County being sixty right now. I, I don't know that now is the best time to jump back into in-person meetings. And I don't know, I don't have a lot of interest in sitting through a two-plus hour meeting wearing a mask and, you know, being in close contact with people. Um, I would make a motion to deny moving city council meetings until the mask mandate in Minnesota is lifted.
I'm just going to, uh, say that I think with the way it's worded, I mean, if you want to do the in-person and, um, you're comfortable doing that, that's an option or doing it the way it's been done for the last year continues to be an option. I think it's I think it's great. I mean, give people the, the option. Um, you know, staff is in city center. And I do think there's significant value in. You know, staff is in city center, and I do think there's significant value in, you know, meeting in person versus, um, online, just because we're all on our screens all the time, and it'd be nice to be, be back and see, see each other.
Mary's having some technical difficulties, so she actually did join us in the council chambers, um, and I think she was going to address the council through the microphone, so.
Well, good evening. I didn't hear hardly anything from you, Matt, so I don't really know the conversation that was going on.
It was all about you, so.
Yeah, I don't think it was. But, um, I, I don't know what anybody said, so you need to update me.
Um, and nobody, actually, there wasn't a whole lot of feedback from the council. We just actually started that, so. Um, what, what we know is that, um, if you do come back and meet in person, there's still the, the mandate from the governor that still requires that mask be worn.
Right.
Um, within the council chambers. Obviously, they can be taken off when communicating and providing testimony within the council chambers. I discussed that, um, you know, where staff is looking, putting up some barriers on the sides here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know David asked about potential barriers in, in front as well, which is a possibility, but as I noted to him, it creates a couple of different chambers within the, within the chambers. Um, we do have included in the, in the, uh, order for you guys' consideration that, um, if you do decide to move this way, um, you could still allow for, um, council members to meet virtually with those that are in the chambers, because we do have technology now that makes that, um, um, accessible and easier than what we previously did. Um, I'm trying to think. I mean, I know the question was asked, um, if there's been any indication of when the mask mandate would be lifted, or some of these restrictions loosened, and my answer was not at this point. Not that, that's, that's been brought to my attention. Um, I think the current executive order is set to expire within the next day or two, and I suppose we'll see what happens after, after that, so.
All right. Thank you for that update. Um, like I said.
Did you hear my motion at all, or were you out then?
I would.
I, I think she was.
Yeah, and Chad made a motion to deny.
Okay.
Back to meeting in person, so. But then we led into more discussion, so.
So Chad made a motion to deny?
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
And no one seconded it?
No one seconded. We're still in discussion, so.
All right, all right. Um, I guess my feeling is until we know where we stand and the numbers are going up, that's what's concerning. You know, I think we're going to be wearing masks for a while yet.
So Mary, the case rate in McCloud County is at sixty right now, just for everybody's information.
Okay, so that number has gone up, right? And I hear more people are hospitalized now, too. I mean, for me, I, like I said before, I'm vaccinated, but that still doesn't mean that you can be negligent either. You know, you still need to wear your mask and you still need to social distance. So.
Well, Chad did, uh, make a motion, and I will second that motion to deny. Uh, I think that we should just, uh, until, my feeling, Mary, what I said was that until we can meet in person and not wear masks, I'd rather just keep the way we're going. So, uh, motion by Chad, second by myself. Um, is there any other discussion on it?
See, Mayor, I just want to add that, just for, for clarity, because I know it's come up from time to time. Um, really, the authority to, to come back and meet in person is, uh, up to the council as a whole. Um, you guys are the ones that have made the decision to meet virtually, and really, for you guys to come back, it's up to, to you guys. And so I know that question has, you know, been raised and how, how we do that, and that's kind of, obviously, how we led to this conversation and, and discussion tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for, for the full board.
Well, I tend to agree that until we can meet in this chamber and we can actually look at our constituents and we can see them smile or grimace, we should probably still be meeting virtually, and it would be safer.
All righty, there's a motion. Uh, is there any other discussion first? If not, I'll call the motion. Uh, roll call, Mary?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Brandon?
Nay.
Dave?
Nay.
Hi, motion carries.
All righty, um, Matt, we have eleven point five.
Yep, Mayor and Council, and I know Andy reads on. Um, one of the things that we've kind of worked through, um, obviously with our police station project and, and financing, one of the mechanisms that we're using for, or we're looking at for potential financing is a general obligation capital improvement plan, um, bonding dollars. Um, and so there's, uh, I guess, a process that we need to go through to do that, and I'll maybe have Andy, um, explain that and the reason for the calling the public hearing, um, for your consideration tonight.
Uh, good evening, Council. Yeah, the, the process we need to go through for these capital improvement plan bonds is just a little bit different than the normal process we go through for our annual roadway improvement bonds. The main difference here is, is that, um, there needs to be a public hearing, and within, after thirty days, there, within a thirty-day period after that public hearing, there can be a reverse referendum where if the public, um, gets enough petitions to vote against it, I think it's five percent of the last general election, they would need to sign on the petition. I- if that, in fact, would happen, then we would have to put this, um, uh, matter on the general election in November, so uh, to avoid that election, uh, we have to go through this process, and we'd also have to, uh, not have any of the residents submit a petition. Essentially, though, it's the same as our, the same type of bond as our, our roadway. It's geo-obligation bonds, which gives us the best interest and best flexibility on the debt. Um, so talking with the elders, reviewing all their options, this, this was the best option. Um, we just have to go through this process, and unfortunately, the calendar, in order to meet up with possibly rewarding the bid in early June, um, we would have to start this public hearing May eleventh, and then obviously you have to have a public publication period before that public hearing, so, um, that's why we quick had to get this on tonight. It's agenda in order to have this public hearing on May eleventh, in order to have everything somewhat wrapped up by June tenth, which would be the end of that thirty-day re- reverse referendum period. Any questions?
Yep, and for any tonight for consideration, Lynn, it's resolution one-five-two-nine-six, and that's the resolution that would call the, the public hearing for May eleventh.
Dinner, taking a motion to set that public hearing?
Make a motion to approve it.
I will second it. Motion by Brandon, second by myself, to set that public hearing for May eleventh. Roll call, Mary?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
All righty, uh, governance, we have the Public Arts Commission minutes from February tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The Hutchinson Library Board minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Liquor Hutch quarterly report. All righty, um, is, uh, Chief Gibson still there?
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
All righty.
He's got some questions for you.
Chief Gibson, so, um, how, uh, can we move the trailer from Second Avenue up to Highway fifteen north? And how, how did that work out on, by the school there on Second Avenue?
Um, we haven't looked at any of the data yet, but, um, as far as, um, I guess I'd maybe give you the, the perspect, or ask for your perspective, since you're the one that brought it to me. Um, if the person that asked for it, did they see any difference in speeds or anything like that?
Well, I do appreciate it that, uh, you did put it up there, and I guess it did curb it a little bit, so, uh, it does, uh, I think that, uh, people don't realize actually how fast they're going until they see it flashing up on the, on the little trailer, so I think it does, does do a, a world of good, so.
Okay, yeah, we can, any specific area, Main Street North that you're referring to, or?
Yeah, up past, uh, Maplewood Academy up that way.
Sure. South or northbound?
Well, I, I think, I, I probably alternate at one. I think, uh, both ways up there, so.
I'll raise this question, can we? It's not, technically, it's not a road that's under our jurisdiction. I would guess we could. We enforce the speed there. I just pose, I better ask that question.
I, I would maybe at the very least touch base with Mindat beforehand. It is the right way, so they do jurisdiction over the right way.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to get the chief in trouble, that's for sure.
As long as he asks for permission.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, chief.
Okay, thanks.
Kent, do you have anything for us tonight?
Maybe just one thing, uh, kind of on the, uh, streetlight front, uh, and, uh, I know you're, Gary, you're very familiar, and we've had some conversations over the year with respect to the LED lights that were put in about five years ago now on Second Avenue out your direction, but, uh, uh, the same, uh, vintage of LED lights is up on Golf Course Road, uh, project that was just after Second Avenue. We've come up the learning curve since those two projects. Uh, we, we have gotten some feedback just recently up on Golf Course Road, so we actually put a restrictor in those lights to, uh, bring down the wattage going up to the fixture. Uh, I think we might look at doing the same for, for Second Avenue, and, uh, it'll bring basically those two segments of roadways and, and those lights, you know, into being consistent with the lighting level that we're now delivering on other projects. I don't know if you have any thought, Gary. I know we've talked about it second over the years, but, uh, yeah, I think, uh, working with utilities, uh, you know, we, we just recently did this up on Golf Course, and, uh, I think it's, it's brought down the lighting level where it's, uh, I think more bearable. And we've, we've gotten some good compliments, uh, from the adjacent residential property owners.
Well, actually, you know, Kent, they've been there so long that I'm kind of used to it now, but, you know, it, it, it is, uh, different, though, if you go you know, on a different street and go down Second Avenue, you can definitely tell it's, it's bright, you know, but and it's, yeah.
And the cost of these restrictors is like twenty-five dollars. Utilities will put them on the, uh, on the poles, the, you know, they'll, they're just a simple mount on to the, uh, you know, basically the conduit coming into the, uh, the light pole, the fixture, so. And, uh, you know, it's like a, uh, a dial on your dining room light, you know, and, uh, if we, if we don't like where it takes them, we can always, uh, turn them up, uh, a little bit pretty easily. So just wanted to make note of that, otherwise, uh, all good.
Kent, is, um, how is the Hawk Crossing coming up on Montana?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Yeah, we did, we did get some, uh, news, uh, not too long ago, uh, the, uh, the shop drawings have been approved by our consultants and by Mindat. Uh, the poles are ordered, uh, the mast arms and the signal poles. That's really the critical path to getting the construction underway. At this point, what we're being told is hopefully those will be arriving late June, early July, so we anticipate a little work being done before those, uh, obviously are installed, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're looking at probably the end of July before that's, that's up and running. Our completion date is the end, I guess, so we're, we're sitting pretty good.
All righty, thanks, Kent. Uh, is John Olson here tonight or not?
Nope, no, he's not.
No, all righty, um, does Mark have anything for us? Since I always forget about him, I thought I better make sure I ask him tonight.
I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks, Mark. Uh, Mary, let's start with you.
Okay, um, since we have the Girl Scouts here, and they're talking about how they're going to be beautifying our park along the river, and the Gateway Park is there, and everybody's on their bikes now, and they're all, they're going to start fishing pretty soon, and people are walking, and I see people down there when it's nice. I think it's time we get that fountain up and running in that river. And there's a sponsor for that fountain, and they are willing to work with the city, so I think we need to get Lynn on that, and we get that fountain up and running. It's part of the beautification of our downtown area in the river, so let's see if we can make that happen.
Yeah, Mary, actually, we've been, uh, we've talked about that, uh, with the resource allocation. Quite frankly, I was waiting for it to get, the weather to get a little nice, and so that's a conversation, um, that we can have, and I'll have a conversation with you after the council meeting too, just about, um, I guess, some concerns that we, we have, so, um, but I think there's some options, um, but, uh, we can talk about that later, so.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Everybody, let's hope the sun's, the sun comes out, the snow goes away, and we can all really get out and enjoy some of this sunshine. That's it for me.
Well, Mary, I, I heard from older gentlemen, you know, how these farmers' tales, they all third snow since the Robinson been back, so it's done snowing, so. Chad?
I do not have anything extra this evening.
Thanks, Chad. Uh, Brandon?
Yeah, uh, no- nothing here other than just to say, um, thank you all for your, you know, commitment and service to our community, and, um, just really looking forward to the day we can meet again and see each other in person whenever that may be. Thanks.
I will second that, Brandon. Uh, Dave, do you have anything for us?
I will third, uh, Brandon's comment. Uh, I just wanted to say thanks to all the, uh, people that, uh, donate blood, uh, regardless of where it's at, what community it is in. I understand that blood is, uh, definitely needed, so if you ca- can do, uh, please do, and thank you to all those that have done that, so appreciate it. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, Matt, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, just two things. One, um, just kind of giving an update on the schedule with, uh, the police station, because I know we are, originally, we're looking at approving plans and specs and going out for bids. Um, that's been pushed back two weeks, so I anticipate that at your next council meeting, you'll be, um, instead of approving those plans and specs and, and going out for bids on that project, and I just want to say that because, um, thankfully, we've been getting a lot of uh, requests, um, for information regarding bidding and when bid's going to happen, and so basically, I've pushed back two weeks. I just figured I'd let the council and the public know. And then lastly, um, the spring cleanup, um, as noted, is this Saturday, um, and so I encourage the public, if you've got stuff to that you want to get rid of, remember two large items, um, no more than two. Um, it should be out, um, by your curb by six in the morning. Um, and so that's coming up, uh, this weekend, and there'll be another one again in the fall, probably late September, so that's it.
All righty, thanks, Matt, and actually, I don't have anything else for us tonight, except, uh, hopefully, we can get out. hopefully, we can get out and enjoy the warmer weather that's coming down our way. So otherwise, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to adjourn. Roll call, Mary?
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.